Call to order in the Auburn City Council Workshop for February 5th. The first item on the agenda is an overview of Dangerous Buildings Process Statute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The Dangerous Buildings Statute gives the City Council some pretty broad authority to look at buildings that constitute some kind of a hazard, that are structurally unsafe, unstable, unsanitary, constitute a fire hazard, or is unsuitable or improper for the occupancy or use to which it is put, or buildings that constitute a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment, or is otherwise dangerous to life or property. So it's a really broad set of standards that the council can apply to varying situations. We typically do a quick overview like this with each new council. Most councils over the last decade or so have used this at least once during their term to address nuisance building in a neighborhood, quite often residential buildings. When these come to you, usually there's been a long-term attempt on the part of staff to try to convince the property owner to remedy whatever's happening at that property. The other situation would be if there was some kind of catastrophic damage to a property, if there was a weather event or a fire, and the owner's not responsive, then it could go from being a safe building to being a dangerous building more quickly. But I would say generally, these are problem properties that we've tried at a staff level to correct issues at. We've been unsuccessful, and then we have a couple of choices, either to not take further enforcement action, but that leaves the problem to exist. We can put together a Dangerous Buildings case, and then we have to also make the decision to either bring that to Superior Court or to the City Council. And we've typically leaned towards bringing that to the City Council, partly because I think it puts on the discussion in public. I think other property owners see if the council's concerned about remedying those things rather than it happening kind of quietly in a courtroom somewhere. And it also really puts the council in the driver's seat to decide if they want to address that situation. The other process that we will use sometimes is an 80K lawsuit, and that really brings a set of violations to court in an abbreviated process that goes to District Court, whereas a dangerous building could either go to council or Superior Court. And the judge in that situation can really just order that the property owner remedy the situation. One of the flexibilities that's nice about the Dangerous Buildings Statute, especially in situations where we think it's likely that the remedy is the demolition of the building, is it orders the property owner to take the action to remedy the situation. But if they don't, then the city is able to remedy the situation and then assess whatever costs are associated with that against the property. So it's not a quick return on the costs, but typically, over the next number of years, the city will get all or most of that back if the property sells. With that, happy to answer any questions. What made this timely, I guess, was we do have a building that we believe is dangerous, and staff is asking you later tonight to schedule that for a public hearing, not to dig into the conditions at that building, but just to schedule the public hearing. And then on the 18th of March, if you're willing, we would have that public hearing and really go over the conditions that exist at the property and ask you to order the property owner to remedy them within 30 days, and then if not, the city could remedy them. But happy to answer any questions generally about Dangerous Buildings Statute.
Any questions from the council?
Eric, I'm kind of jumping the gun because this relates to tax-acquired, but I'm thinking because it's harder to do tax-acquired property, you know, work now with the state, change in the state law, is, you know, enforcing or using this Dangerous Buildings process a little more aggressively may be a good way of avoiding these places going to the tax acquisition stage and having a real hard time to deal with it then?
It could be, but I think it raises another question. I'm glad you asked that because ultimately, buildings that are acquired for non-payment of this cost assessment end up being tax-acquired. So it kind of, that's, I guess, a new downside to the statute, that you end up with a tax acquisition unless you work something else out with the bank. A lot of them may have been headed there anyways, but it's a different process that ends with a tax acquisition, with the same limitations on sales.
Any other questions?
I guess a quick one. Thanks for that presentation. Is there any reason to consider, like, the number of people being housed in a structure when making this decision, or are you just looking at objective structural factors?
So we have had situations, one not that long ago on Hampshire Street, where there were people still housed in the building. I think it's absolutely a consideration, but I think those people are generally in danger if we're considering this. What happened in the case of Hampshire Street was the council ordered that it be demolished, but that brought the bank that had a mortgage into the discussion, and we actually ended up with a really good solution where they reinvested in the building. It's not complete yet, but it's well on its way, and it'll be safe and comfortable housing for people. It applies a pressure. It doesn't guarantee that demolition is the outcome, but it's absolutely a consideration. I think most of them are generally vacant, but that was unusual.
Anyone else, questions for Mr. Cousins? No, thank you. So the next item is proposed zoning amendment, discussion of Section 601304.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is a text amendment that was discussed last year in a project where it came up, and it may have limited the city's ability to review or deny a project. It gives specific time limits for when the planning board has to hold a public hearing, and then a specific time limit for when the planning board has to make a decision after they receive a completed application. Phil had asked that we give you the opportunity to consider changing this. We've looked at some other communities. Auburn has a 30-day requirement to hold the first public hearing, and then a 60-day, 60 days for a decision to be made after that public hearing, so a total of 90 days, but certain steps have to happen along the way. A lot of communities allow for more time to get to that public hearing, and other communities allow for more time after the public hearing to make a decision. We think there would be some value in having more time to initially get to the public hearing as well as more time to get to a decision on the planning board's part if they need that time. Not that they would take that time if the project was clearly meeting all the standards and didn't have issues to be resolved, but staff is suggesting that we open this up as a potential zoning amendment and consider extending those timeframes to allow for more flexibility on when the hearing and then the review and decision can happen.
Any questions from the council?
So I have a few comments on this, Eric. So there's a couple things in reading this over that seem problematic to me, and one was, we don't have a clear definition of completed in our ordinance, and I think the practice right now is, the site plan is submitted, right, to your office, and you review it, and you might keep looping through that until you're satisfied that it's completed. Is that, that's how we're doing it now?
Yep, and staff is making that determination when it gets scheduled and is complete.
Right, so however we do this, if we continue with that current practice, so we change the number of days, I think we need a better definition of completed. When I read through some of these other ones, some of the cities leave it to the planning board. The staff asks for the materials, the applicant can submit them or not, or just proceed, and then the planning board took a vote. That's one way to do it, or we could have a better definition so it's clear. Because that was part of the problem, I think, this last time, was there was some disagreement among the city and the applicant about when an application was completed. So I think that needs to be clear. The other thing I found problematic in this that I didn't see in these other ordinances is we have presumptive approval. So the way I read this, if the final action hasn't been taken within 60 days after the submittal, they're issued an approval whether or not the planning board is done with their process. So I think whatever the timeframes are, right, this is a balancing act. We, you want to have some certainty about when you're going to get to the public hearing so developers know that you're going to move this thing along and act in a timely manner. But on the other hand, if you had complex applications, or as Ms. Daggett was explaining in the planning board training the other night, if you, her example was a traffic study, and if the traffic study isn't acceptable to the planning board, they might ask for a peer review. And on the current schedule, we have, that's almost impossible to happen because you have the public hearing, and then the next meeting, you're at your 60 days after, it could be at your 60 days. So I think we should remove this presumptive approval and, following along with what Mr. Cousins said, make sure we have some defined dates in there, but give the planning board the flexibility if they need to do more work on a larger, complex application to have the time to do that.
Any other questions on this?
Question on how this stacks us up against other cities. I know you had Bang over in there, I forget the other one, but, you know, I can think of one community that, it's within, you know, 20, 30 miles, fairly commercial, and has a reputation for being a nightmare in terms of getting through the planning process. So, you know, how do we stack up other communities in Central Maine, say?
Yeah, there were differences in a lot of the ordinances. Some of them had longer time periods to get to the public hearing, other had longer time periods to make a decision. But I think right now, we're on the shorter end, I would say, on average, for the total process. And that presumptive approval is certainly an issue. I think we need to clear that up. What we would ask for, and I know you can't do it in the workshop, but if there's interest in this, you could initiate a zoning change, an amendment that would address that list of issues, and we could work with the planning board to finalize the text, or you could work on the text, but either way would work.
Any other questions on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just follow up, Mr. Cousins, just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. In your perspective, is the potential challenge more in the total days to have the application completed, or the approval process completed, or the days to the initial review by the board?
I think it's both in the examples that we've talked about, especially if there's additional peer review required for traffic or stormwater, or one of those typical peer reviews. Some flexibility on both would be helpful, but also making sure it's not so long that a developer thinks the process could go on forever, or be unpredictable.
Yeah, so in reading these, I know Bitterford has no dates, right? So in my perspective, that's really bad for your developer community because they have no idea when they're going into this, when things might happen. So, you know, that's at one extreme end of the scale. They probably like the flexibility, but it seems like it's not a good message to developers about how you're going to act.
Any other questions? Yeah, next item is tax-acquired property. Kelsey Earl and Jay Brencheck will present on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I have given a presentation on tax-acquired property in the past. The thing that makes it different this time is that change in legislature that was brought up from last year, but I'll get to that. What I'm going to do first is just go over the process for how a property becomes tax-acquired. So the City of Auburn follows all state mandates on taxation, which is part of Title 36, Part Two. As most of you know, the tax bills are sent to property owners in August with the first half due in September, second half due the following March. In April, the city sends a courtesy notice to any accounts with an unpaid balance that's not required by statute. We do that as an extra step to try and remind people before they start getting any legally required notices. In May, the 30-day notices are sent. Those are required by statute and have specific language required for them. If they're not paid within those 30 days, that's when a lien would get filed. We're also required to file those within 10 days of expiration of the notice. We're also required by law to file a lien with the Registry of Deeds. Certified copies are sent to mortgage holders and owners. Once that lien is filed, a property owner has 18 months from that date in which to Before that 18 months elapses, we send a 45- to 30-day, though generally we lean towards 45 to give more time, foreclosure notice. That's sent as a reminder of that impending automatic foreclosure, again, required by statute and has very specific language in the statute that's required. Once the 18 months has elapsed, the lien filing automatically forecloses with the registry. However, the former owner does have a 30-day window after that foreclosure in which to redeem the property. They will have to pay any back taxes incomplete up through the tax due date, so the entire current tax year. So the changes, LD 101, it came into effect on June 30th of 2023. That states that any tax-acquired real estate that's to be sold to someone other than that former owner, like I mentioned the redemption process. The city also generally tries to return properties to a previous owner unless there are some dangerous buildings or code enforcement issues. So in most cases, even after that 30-day window has elapsed, we still allow former owners to redeem that property. So really, it says 18 months, but it's more like a two-year process before the city does anything with a property that's been tax-acquired. LD 101 states that if we're going to sell it to someone other than the previous owner, we have to inform them of that impending sale. It's done on a state tax assessor prepared form, and it has to be done at least 90 days before we list that property. That 90-day notice allows the former owner to demand a certain way that that property is listed, which is by a licensed real estate broker. They can choose to do that. They can also choose to not respond. If they choose to have us list it with a licensed real estate broker, we are required to sell the property via quitclaim deed, which is generally how we sell a tax-acquired property anyway, at the highest price at which we're able to sell it, and that has to be done within six months of listing. If they choose to either let us know they are not interested in that process or to not respond at the expiration of the 90 days, the city can then sell the property in any manner that's listed under policy, which our policy, as I've stated, is that we generally hold on to them for some time to give each property owner an opportunity. But some of our properties have been listed with a real estate broker in the past. Most often, we sell them by closed bid, which is a public process. Oops, sorry. I don't know how to use a slideshow, apparently. So it does tell us that we must also calculate excess sale proceeds. Any excess proceeds from the sale of a property must go to that previous owner. However, in order to calculate those proceeds, there are some things that we are to deduct from that. That includes all taxes that are owed on the property, taxes that would have been assessed to the property after foreclosure. If the property's been changed to the City of Auburn's name, it wouldn't have had any taxes, so we would have to assess that. Any accrued interest or fees, including the licensed real estate's broker fees, and any other expenses incurred by us for selling it, if we had any sort of legal fees, if they owed anything to any of the other departments in the city, such as having a CDBG loan or something of that matter. It can include employee time, our lien and foreclosure process costs, and any, oh, also any unpaid water or sewer bills owed to the city. This is just an example of the template form that's provided from the tax assessor. It's a little small here. If anybody would like a copy of it, I can certainly send it to you. It's also available online, Main Revenue Services. As you can see, there's just some small blocks that we change. It's very specific on what's to be said and not said. And then this part is for Jay.
Yeah, so, so we have had a few properties that we are in the process of selling or sold. One of them is the St. Louis Church. So even though during the previous city council, we got approval to sell the church, we still had to go through all the steps that was shown by Kelsey earlier, and that was complete just before the new year, and so therefore, the actual purchase and sales agreement should be complete within a month or so. And then we also have three other properties that are in process right now, 86 Western Ave, 192 Winter Street, and 16 Newberry Street. All of those, the property owners have been sent notification, and we're just waiting to either hear back or for that 90 days to expire.
Does anyone have any questions about the process or those properties Jay mentioned?
Counsel, please.
Yeah, I had a question about roughly, I guess not an exact number, but roughly, how many liens get sent out, you know, how many lien notices get sent out each year? And then, how many people remedy that situation? Obviously, it seems like not many make it to the final stage of foreclosure.
So we have about 10,913 parcels with the city. About 400 lien notices go out, but usually only around 100 to 250 end up getting leamed. Most of those end up paying by the time foreclosure notices go out. We do generally send around 100 foreclosure notices, but there's not nearly as many of those actually end up foreclosing in the end.
Other questions?
The three properties that you showed, the 90 days means that you're now going to list them again, or there's interested parties to buy those?
There is interested parties in those other three properties. Really what had happened is economic development, that being myself, got a little ahead of the game, and we went ahead and we were marketing the properties. We had interested buyers. When we finally learned how all of this LD was going to shake out, once we did, we put that on pause, but we have interested parties.
Yeah, each of those properties was listed before LD 101 went into effect, which again was June 30th of 2023. Once we learned of those changes, we had put everything on pause once that went into effect until we knew how it was going to affect the process.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So our final workshop item is Transportation System Department position. Mr. Manager.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Jonathan, come on up with me. One thing I just wanted to highlight was just some work that's being done as pertains to our transportation systems process that we started, I believe it was March. So we're coming up with almost a two-year window now of when we brought Jonathan on. Part of that goal was to work on some initiatives throughout the city to apply for funding through Main Department of Transportation to take a look at some of our lease agreements as it pertains to the intermodal facility, and start working through some of those initiatives. Jonathan's been able to secure us some funding, get us in the queue for consideration from MDOT on certain projects, and so that's been the work that's been done. In March of 2023, after being kind of in place for about a year, is when we had started dealing with some management concerns at the Auburn-Louisville Airport. As a result of that, I had placed Jonathan on the board as my representative. He'd been working with the board through some of the issues there. There was no manager at the time, and the board designated Jonathan as the acting director, I guess, manager, airport manager. And so we've been having him work there right along to bring things back to where they need to be at the airport. Considerable amount of work has been done there. I'll have Jonathan talk about that briefly in a minute of some of the work that's been done. Where we are currently is, the mayor and I met with the mayor of Lewiston and the city administrator of Lewiston. We talked about collaboration efforts with some joint initiatives, and one of the items that we discussed was related to management of the airport, work being done with the Lewiston-Auburn Railroad Company, as well as work that's done at the intermodal facility. Jonathan can talk a little bit more about the challenges with the intermodal facility as City of Auburn, it's Lewiston-Auburn Rail, but it's also airport, and how you gain access and the leases that have to be done to leverage that property is challenging. And so from the meeting that the mayor and I had, what we came from that meeting was, for me to task Jonathan, was really identifying what a great, a good solution would be for us to be able to move forward with a shared position funded by these different entities to work collaboratively within the city on transportation matters. And so you see his memo that he was able to provide, it's in your packet. I'll let Jonathan just talk a little bit about what's been done at the airport. Where we're at currently is, we had a airport budget meeting last Wednesday. I spoke to the board about the work that's being done between the two cities on this initiative, and notification was also sent to the members of the Lewiston-Auburn Rail, and the City of Lewiston will be having a workshop soon to discuss the same proposal, with the hope that we could basically be looking at working together in a collaborative effort to really focus on transportation matters within the two cities, as well as policy setting, as Lewiston has some large transportation initiatives that they'll be working on in the near future, as well as Auburn, as we look at some of the work that we're doing on Washington Street, Minot Avenue, areas up around the mall district. So there's a lot of initiatives that are coming that really require a lot more attention than what we would normally have just within our regular workforce of our engineering department or public services. Jonathan, you want to add a little more regarding the airport?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can highlight a couple of items, or a quick handful, as Phil let me know, he wanted me to share a little bit of what we've been working on. And I appreciate the mayor coming out last week. Civil Air Patrol had a great award ceremony, and I know he had a chance to sit in on a board meeting, I think it was in December. And anyone who had sat in a board meeting a year ago last December, the environment's certainly different, in part because we've built a customer service-oriented attitude out there. At the end of the day, the airport thrives when people want to take part in aviation activities, be it as a business, as a private pilot, or otherwise. You may have read some of the news articles, there's There's been a significant or complete restructuring of staff. The previous year, the org chart had about thirteen people. We're at four right now. A lot of that downsizing administrative, the administrative side of the airport, or almost entirely eliminating it, and leveraging the capabilities that we have within Auburn Hall, Kelsey and, and her team, you know, accounts receivable, accounts payable, really streamlining the number of people that need to touch documents, putting the airport back on the city's IT backbone, which allows for us to streamline payroll processes. So really making it function like a city department, even though it's a joint agency. I want to say not unlike LA nine-one-one, but certainly that's a, a, a bit of a different beast. There's been a lot of regulatory work, rebuilding agency relationships between the FAA and Main DOT that's been a part of that. Because of some tenant disagreements, the previous manager actually called in the FAA to do an inspection of the airport and how it was meeting its federal obligations. And that yielded a, not only a number of, of items that the FAA had concerns on, whether their perception or not, they require some, some diligence to respond and reply. And that's taken quite a bit of time. One of the requirements was to do a full review of leases and use of airport property. I won't get into the, into the weeds about FAA grant assurances. We could do that at another workshop. But the, the airport's always obligated to get fair market value for its property and can only with FAA approval allow land to be used for anything that's not aviation-related. In that lease review, some good news. And this was one of my, my early, early items I, I was able to dig up. NGL Energy, previously Gas Supply Resources, back in nineteen, nineteen ninety-seven, that's twenty-five years ago, built a propane terminal on airport land and agreed to a payment in lieu of taxes on that land, but never made payment. So we spent some time, or I spent some time, and ultimately had GNA and, and admin helping out. And we went through and documented all the property values, all the mill rates based on the formula, and we were able to negotiate and settle with NGL. And they paid the city about sixty-three thousand dollars in, in a back payment in lieu of taxes. One example, there were lots of those things that came up during the lease review. There's a couple dozen leases out there, so that was, that was a lift. We did have to rebuild the capital program, and we're still rebuilding elements of that. But because we get FAA funds directly, the FAA had concerns about the capital program, so we needed to engage with them as part of addressing that. And maybe not the least of which, Elite Airways had ceased making payments to the airport. And of course, their lease payments pay the debt service on Hangar Five. The airport owes both cities collectively about a hundred and fifteen thousand a year. I needed to manage not only their eviction, the abandonment of their property in that legal process, the sale of their non-aviation property, and then figuring out how we could leverage a Los Angeles-based finance company that owned the two aircraft that weren't airworthy, and how we could go about trying to monetize those to help close some of the airport's financial gaps. So there's a, a quick rundown of some of the fun we've had at the airport. But anyone who's been out there or talked to pilots or come to a board meeting, there's still plenty of work to do. But customers are, are, are out there having a good time. Fuel prices are competitive, we're attracting businesses. In fact, I met today with another business looking to relocate from another main airport. And things, things are, things are going well, and we want to continue that. I'll give one quick example on intermodal, and then I'll, I'll stop my filibuster here. Been having conversations with both Power and Construction Group, which is a, that's a utility, utility service provider. They bring in utility poles for both Versant Power, which serves Eastern Maine, and Central Maine Power, which is part of Avon Grid, that serves the rest of the state. So they're like a contracted warehouse. In fact, in other states in the Northeast, Power and Construction Group also builds warehouses where they'll store components and parts for the Avon Grid utility. So they're a full-service, third-party wholesaler. They've been leasing the intermodal since it became inactive back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. So by inactive, I mean there, there are no intermodal services being offered there. There is an intermodal operated by Savage, formerly Savage Safe Handling or Safe Handling, at the end of the Lewis and Auburn Railroad Main Line. We were in discussions with them, and I know there had been discussions off and on between them and, and St. Lawrence and Atlantic. Those were re-initiated. St. Lawrence and Atlantic sees some opportunities in the near term to bid on customers to use the Auburn intermodal. They would need a lease to do that, which means negotiating and balancing a lease with them with retaining Power and Construction Group as, as a tenant there. The intermodal's very attractive to them because of what they carry and how their drivers need to carry those loads. If they can move within the intermodal, they don't need the DOT permit to be on the public right-of-way. So if another yard was identified and they had to split yards, it would make inventory management a real challenge. That's been an attractive part of, of that site. There is opportunity to expand the footprint of the intermodal, not only with the city-owned land, but the LA Railroad owns some abutting land, as well as airport land. And we've been doing some of that with the airport. There's more to be done with the railroad. The real challenge with St. Lawrence and Atlantic, and this played out when we lost a customer five or six years ago, is the intermodal has three different rail, I'll call it three different rail options to serve it. You have the Lewis and Auburn Railroad Main Line, which is closest to Lewis and Junction Road. You have what St. Lawrence calls the S-line, which is the line that's inside the intermodal on city property, or actually airport property leased to the city. And then you have the Rangeley Branch Line, which was constructed six, seven years ago, or opened six, seven years ago, and has yet to see a railcar. Each of those three lines have different, a different pricing structure. And in some ways, a different governance structure. And in the conversation we had with some corporate folks from Genesee in Wyoming, which is the parent company in Jacksonville to St. Lawrence and Atlantic, they are open and would prefer to be able to have a master lease that includes the LA Railroad corridor, Rangeley Branch, and the intermodal. So one business relationship, one streamlined point of contact. As they said, they don't want their engineer to have to decide when they're moving those railcars. Each day, which, which one is, is the place to put individual railcars. Obviously, it's somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but the, the dynamic is it ma, it makes it a challenge for them to bid on, to bid on prospects, not having that consistency. There's some added play there that requires us to, to be cautious in a negotiation in that CSX, now a Class One, has, is building up their own intermodal facility. Rigby Yard down in South Portland has seen some significant investment. And I think CSX is probably intent on doing some additional business attraction. And that may not all be from customers that aren't currently using intermodal services. And of course, we've got our intermodal, as well as Savage's, at the end, other end of the line. I think we're well-positioned. I, I've met with the Savage folks that are in charge of business development. They, they work out of Cleveland. They see some opportunities, the services that they can offer. I know Jay is working on some engagement with the Forest Products Sector in Maine to make Auburn attractive to them. And the intermodal and our transportation facilities also can play a key role in attracting some of those types of businesses. So I'll, I'll stop there, Mr. Manager.
Thanks, Jonathan. So ultimately, what we've been looking for is efficiencies. And by us putting the airport on our MUNIS system, on our IT system, having Jonathan there, and now really evaluating his time there, the airport will not need a full-time manager moving forward. It'll be a part-time, part-time hours. What we're hoping for is that if all these entities can come together, what they would do is they would contract with the City of Auburn. We will bill them out for the IT and finance services, as well as public work services. We are supporting them in that way as well when needed. And as far as their ice and snow management plan and, and equipment that, that may be needed there as well. And, and then we would contract them for the, the management of, of the operation. And then we would also contract with Lewis and Auburn Rail. And, and then the city would allocate funds through our intermodal lease to help offset any additional costs that may be coming in. So that would be the goal moving forward. Like I said, we believe it brings some efficiencies. There's still several steps to this process. The, the Lewis and Auburn Rail still needs their meeting. The airport, like I said, only had this introduced at their, their first budget meeting. And then the City of Lewiston still needs to move forward with this as well and, and hear, hear this proposal. So that's where we're at currently, but I want to make sure you're up to speed on what we're doing and as we move forward, some negotiations.
Any questions from the council? Counsel White.
Just, just a quick, quick comment that when I went on the board, the temperature was a little high in the boardroom, and, and it, it went down over the months. I think that was really good, and credit to Jonathan. And I also think the, the proposal decoupling Jonathan from chairmanship of these entities will be well-received by Lewiston. That was one of the issues at the airport that sort of nagged at some of the members, and I think that's a good, good resolution.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
The, as, as Jonathan said, I've been to a couple of board meetings and have had some folks that have businesses at the airport or pilots continue to follow up. And I, I think there's a lot of positive work that's gone on out there. People seem very happy with the progress that's been made in the last year and looking forward to that continuing. Jonathan didn't mention, but there's a master planning effort going on at the airport. I think that'll be really important, not just for, for our council and Lewistons, but for the whole airport community to better define where the airport's going to go and how we're going to get there. Think there's some real potential that's untapped and look forward to seeing the master plan that, when you guys work on it.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I'd recommend, we have an executive session at the end of the council meeting. If it's the interest of the council, we could move that executive session to, after the workshop.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? This would be item nine on the agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? Do we have a motion to enter into executive session for an economic development pursuant to win MRSA four oh five subsection six C where premature disclosure would prejudice a competitive bargaining position of the city?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counsel Milks, seconded by, who seconded it? Whiting? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? We're in executive session.
If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Gary. I'm an Auburn City Councilor at large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, Ward One City Councilor.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, Ward Two City Councilor.
Steve Milks, Ward Three City Council.
Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward Four.
Leroy Walker, City Council, Ward Five.
Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Phil Kroll, City Manager.
The first agenda item tonight is consent items. There's one consent item, reappointing Leonard Kimball to the Ethics Panel. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Milks to adopt the consent agenda as printed. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? The motion's adopted. The next item will be Communications. The first item, we will have a presentation on tax increment financing and credit enhancement agreements by Mr. Holmes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Councilors, thank you very much for having me this evening. I put in front of your seats before the meeting a copy of all the slides. They're also on the back table for anybody in the audience who might want to look at them. This is just a conversation about what a tax increment financing is, what credit enhancement is, so we can get a general familiarization with it. I believe that probably over the next couple of years, you'll see a number of these come forward as things continue to be built around the city. So first, let's just talk about some of the basics. So there are basically two types of tax increment financing districts that can be created. One is an affordable housing, so therefore if there's an affordable housing project specific to that, then we can do something with that that has its own set of rules, and that's actually approved by main housing. The other one is the, basically a municipal approved through DECD, which is the more general and what you see on a more regular basis. So if a, we know that there's a business going to be building up, you know, a new $10 million facility somewhere, we may want to be able to work with that developer, which could mean a credit enhancement agreement, or it could be just the tax increment financing district. If we have some projects we see in that area, we want to make sure that funding is really dedicated to. So it's really large-scale redevelopment of blighted, underutilized districts is what it can be used for a lot of times. It promotes mixed-use things. It's really a tool for the council to use to direct development in certain areas, as well as with certain companies to be able to make those benefits happen. Key terms that you're going to hear when we talk about these things, and this is where we get into all the acronyms, and it really becomes alphabet soup. So obviously, TIF District, a Tax Increment Financing, which is actually, it's a municipally-created geographic area. So basically, we draw a line around particular parcels. It can be a singular parcel. It could be an entire area of the city. There are some restrictions on how much of the city you can put into a TIF District, things like that, that we'll get into a little later. OAV, which is the Original Assessed Value. So it's really important that we get down to what is the original assessed value of that district. So we work with the assessing department, and what they do is they look at what's there now and what is the value of what's there now based on our tax records. Because what happens is that number gets locked in place, so that everything we look forward after that is what's next. Okay? So it's, you know, whatever they build, that's the value that we can start to talk about that we're going to capture a portion of or all. So increased assessed value, which is the new taxes generated. So if it was originally a $500,000, you know, district with some buildings, and now we're going to actually have another $10 million added, that would be that increased assessed value that we'd be looking at as that tax. So it goes from $100,000 or whatever it was to 1.1 million or 10.1 million. Captured assessed value is the percentage that we decide that we should capture of that assessed value. So you can capture up to 100% of it, or you can capture a lesser percentage. So therefore, if you want a half of those taxes on that new value to wind up going into the way it always would normally happen if we had no TIF, then that can happen, and then the other half can be captured that we can do those special projects with. Okay? The total tax shift. So this is where the true benefit of a TIF comes into play. So what a TIF does is it actually, I hate to use the word hides, but it basically makes it so that the state can't see that value that's going on, that increased value. And what that means is, is that when the county decides to write the tax bill for the city, that new $10 million in value that's there, they don't see. So if you're going to pay, you know, one mil rate, you know, a dollar per thousand on that new property in county taxes, you won't have to do that for that 20-year period possibly or longer. Same thing happens for school subsidy. The more value your community has, there's a formula that will be affected, so therefore you actually get less money from the state for your schools. By, by, you know, basically shielding this value, that doesn't get affected. And then thirdly is municipal revenue sharing. Again, it's a complicated formula, but the reality is, is to lower your value to some extent is what allows you to continue to get more municipal revenue sharing. So those three things are the real keys. The shelter that value makes a big difference for the, for the community. So the TIF District Revenue, or the TDR, are taxes from the captured assessed value and the Development Program. So when you look at these TIFs, what we're going to bring to you is a really large document that's very prescriptive, and in it will have a development program. So it'll talk about, first of all, what's going to go there, what we think is going to go there. And sometimes we don't know. Sometimes it's very perspective. It's like, you know, we think there's going to be development in this area. We want to create this district. I like to be really careful not to create those districts too far in advance, because as we all know, it takes time to get these projects off the ground and get them moving. So you want to make sure you get them as close as possible, so you capture the most value. But it'll also talk about what is the money going to be used if we do that TIF, and we capture that value, and we put that, and we shelter that. You know, what roads need to be improved, what walkability needs to be improved, what street lights need to be improved, what safety, you know, 15% can go towards a safety building or other public administrative-type buildings. All those things will be discussed in there, and you can be a part of that conversation to whatever level you feel you want to be, that we'll move that forward. Some new things that have been added over the last couple of years by the state is you can actually put money aside within those TIF districts for affordable housing, for homelessness, for things like that. So we can actually write those into these TIF packages, so we can start to set some of that money aside if that's what you choose to do, so that when these things come up, you'll have a way to pay for some of those projects without having to necessarily just go raise taxes. The credit enhancement agreement is a specific agreement within what we're doing that is, if you want a specific development to be done in a specific way, and the developer can show that it really just doesn't work. So there's an underwriting process, similar to what a bank does for underwriting, that we go through. And if they show that, you know, there's a $150,000 hole, that they just, you know, they can't make the project work without that funding. Or if the city's really saying, based on our ordinances, there's $1.3 million in offsite improvements that need to occur for this to happen, that we know you're the last person in, so you're going to be paying for it, but everybody else is going to be taking, getting advantage of it. The city may want to say, hey, you know what, let's work with them, and part of this credit enhancement is to help pay for those offsite things. So again, a lot of conversation, a lot of direction from you on how this will all come together. There's also an omnibus TIF, which is basically a large-scale, facilitated incentives, and it's not totally known ahead of time. So the state allows us to build a large one, a large TIF District, and not write all the rules until we get to different parts of it as it grows. So it's kind of like, hey, we're going to do this, and this is our general idea, but as we progress through, this council would come back and have more conversations, improve different parts of it to get different incentives, different credit enhancement packages, things like that. So that's kind of the terminology. I'll take a breath. Any questions so far? So policies and procedures. In the packet, I didn't, not in the one that I gave you, possibly, yeah, they are there. You can actually see our TIF policy and our application. So basically, about a year and a half ago now, I guess, we actually came up with a policy on how these things will be done, so that there's kind of a rhyme or reason. We actually require the developer to pay for the legal costs to put these things together now. They have to, you know, do that and apply ahead of time. So we put a timeline together that makes it much better for the council and for the developer to understand where they're going and what they're going to probably wind up with. That application makes it really easy for us, because we collect all the information we need to write the TIF ahead of time, as well as a lot of the financial documents to underwrite it, so we can see if there really is a hole that needs to be filled, so we can make a recommendation to you folks. So the next slide is an example. TIF 23, Schooner Memory Care. So you can see there, the original assessed value was $327,000. The new investment was $17 million. The amount of the IAV, anybody want to remember what that is? Increased assessed value captured was 58.5%. The captured assessed value came out to $8,512,700, so a total projected revenue of $1,718,180. The Development Program budget, once you move to the right, shows you the max CEA was 35% of the captured assessed value, or $625,000. They budgeted $40,000 for administrative costs and $1.2 million for road improvements, so a total project expense of $1,869,000. The TIF cash flow to date, the TIF age is in five of the 20 years, a revenue of $463,000, and so far they've taken $1,073,300 for admin, and credit enhancement has been paid to the developer of $121,000, and we've paid $389,000 in debt service, which is on the roadwork that was done. So you haven't got to wait and save the money up. You can actually use it as a debt service payment. So you basically have to be able to show that the TIF is throwing enough revenue off to make the debt payment for that service that you're going to be providing. So as you look at the community benefit, the new assisted living units were 66, and the new full-time jobs created was 56. So a really pretty good project for the community, put a lot of money into our infrastructure, as well as help the developer get something really good done. The next slide is just a whole lot of information. I'm not going to go through what's on the left. That's a lot of detail. But if you look at combined TIF revenues versus expenses, you can see there that you're looking at $65 million versus $53 million, and you can kind of see how it gets broken down. So you have admin, credit enhancement, the capital improvement, debt service, and general fund. And basically, the debt service, you'll see, really kind of sometimes gets to be the bigger piece, because we really lean on that, is that we haven't got to save up that money, wait for it to get there. So you'd be spending that even long after it may be done. I talked about statutory limitations. The city must comply with acreage and valuation caps established by the statute. Each proposed TIF cannot exceed 2% of the total acreage of the city, and the total amount of all current and proposed TIFs cannot exceed 5% of the total acreage of the city. Now, there are some exclusions. You know, the government doesn't want to do anything that's simple. So any existing or proposed downtown TIFs can be excluded. The transit-oriented development TIFs are excluded. Community wind power TIFs are excluded. Pine tree development zones approved prior to January 1 of 2009 are excluded, so the total amount of all current and proposed TIFs cannot exceed 5% of the total municipal valuation for a money side. So you've got acreage, and then you've got valuation. And you really go down through the same kind of thing, what's, what's pulled out of there. And you take all your affordable housing TIFs out, omnibus TIFs can come out. So we still have a lot of room that we can grow, because on the next slide, you can see the future TIF capacity. The current value in TIFs is 28 million or 20%, but if you look at available for TIF is $103 million still left of the total capacity. So we've only used 20% of the capacity for the TIF so far from that side. And on acreage, it's very similar. You'll see that we're at 22% of that, and so we have 78% left there. So there's still plenty of room to create TIFs and use that value for what you see as the right thing to do. Again, any questions at this point?
I've got a question. Thank you, Glenn. With regard to the amount of, I guess, TIF, it looks like in both cases, whether it's acreage or original assessed value, we're under 25% roughly. How, do you know how that compares to other similarly sized cities with similar development aspirations? Are most people at that general rate of use?
I haven't gone to look at every individual city. I can tell you that the larger cities are going to have larger percentages. Obviously, Auburn has a real good benefit when being a very large acreage city, which, which gives us a little advantage there. And, but the larger cities have higher values, so they have a little advantage theirs. We happen to be like right in that middle spot. When it comes to similar-sized cities, there's only, you know, you go one or two above us and one or two below us, and everybody else would be out of our realm. Yep.
On your example, can you explain, on the financial report we get from the Finance Office, it lists out all of the TIFs, and a number of these have a negative fund balance, and Schooner Memory Care is one of them. So I'm not quite clear on why some of the TIFs have a current negative balance.
So when it comes to finances, you, my understanding would be is that you actually incur things when you do them. So therefore, if, you know, that bond may be out, that payment's going to have to come back to bring them back to even. Correct? Thank you.
So the total amount of the bond is shown in there, and that's why it's a negative, and we're paying that down as we accrue revenue from the TIF on an annual basis. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So statutory project costs, you can see, so you can put things into general fund. You have admin, housing services, and they all kind of list out through all of that. The TIF expense actual is in orange, and the TIF expense budget is in blue. So you can see public safety. We've got a lot that we're planning on spending there. Road improvements is a lot. But then when you come back, debt service had nothing really planned for it, but that's where all the money really goes. So you really need to take that orange line and kind of spread it out across some of the blue lines to make it actually make sense. But this is the way that things are set up in the system to show. And then risks and common criticisms is the next slide. I always like to make sure we try to balance this. So development projects do not meet budgetary expectations, so therefore, gee, we're going to build a $20 million thing, and it's going to be amazing, and we're going to have all these people, and it doesn't work out that way. They wind up only building Phase One, and they don't get to Phase Two and Three. So sometimes that is a risk you take, is that you're going to make an expectation of, we want to do all this stuff with this money. It doesn't come in, because you only get what it produces. Okay, so there's no money for anything to happen until they start paying taxes, because that's where that money comes from. Assessed value projection is less than projected, and reduced mil rate lowers TIF revenue. So if you all do a really good job, you need to remember that when we do lower that mil rate, it does impact the TIFs and what the projections were. So we just need to make sure that we balance that when we give you our reports. Common criticisms are taxpayers subsidizing private development through credit enhancement agreements. The real answer there is, is that if you don't develop it, you get nothing. So if you've got a two-acre piece of land in the middle of downtown, and no one develops anything on it, it's never going to be worth anything more. So if we have to give us an incentive to somebody to come in and do that project and make it work, that's going to pay taxes forever, because as we all know, those don't go away. So when that value gets there, it's going to come back to us. So, and it's really balancing that, that we're not giving away the farm, but at the same time, we incentivize what we want to have in our community, whether that be low-income housing, market-rate housing, or business. All of those are needed. It's just a matter of how do we make that work in a balanced way?
Q and A?
Council, have any questions?
House Whiting?
Thank you. I'm trying to remember on tax-exempt properties, what, how the original assessed value was treated. I used to know, but I can't remember.
So as long as the city holds it long enough to go through a tax cycle, it goes back to zero, because it's assessed to zero. The land will always have value, but the building won't, which, which will allow us then to create that delta.
So, and just to clarify for me, on the credit enhancement agreement, it's not other people paying a developer, say. It's the developer getting their own taxes back. So it's not somebody else paying a developer. It's just their own taxes that they pay that they get returned to them.
Just for clarity, the developer, the owner of the property, must pay their taxes. If they don't pay their taxes, there is nothing to give them back, because you are correct. It's, if they, we give them 25% of whatever the taxes are for five years or 10 years, then after they pay their tax bill, it goes through the process in finance, and then finance cuts them a check back for that 25% after everything's been checked off.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Holmes. So following up on this, on the common criticism issues, it seems to me engaging in the TIF is really a trade-off, right? The trade-off here is this valuation avoidance that helps us maximize revenue on the state side, but the limitation is on use of that tax revenue, right? It doesn't flow, just so we're all clear on how this works, it doesn't flow into the general fund. It only flows into a TIF fund, and there's restricted use on that money. It only flows into a TIF fund, and there's restricted use on that money.
Yes, there are restrictions. However, the restrictions are pretty wide, and the council gets to decide what a lot of those are.
Right, and I think that's the important point, which is, as TIFs come forward, I think the council needs to think very broadly about what you're going to use this for, because some of these prior TIFs are a bit constrained, and you want to try to avoid, to the extent possible, cutting off things that you might do through the general fund, because they're now in a TIF fund.
Correct.
I guess the other question, the other comment I would make about the credit enhancement agreement, so I agree with your point about, in one circumstance where a credit enhancement agreement is used, is when there's very challenging developments, that the only way the city's going to achieve that is through some incentive. The common criticism I hear in the community is that there needs to be some identified public purpose. I think that we really need to think about that as a council as these come forward, and tie them to something that's of equivalent value to the city. That doesn't necessarily have to be a tangible asset, but it could be policy goals such as we're expecting a certain number of jobs to be created, or there's some other type of policy that we want to see implemented that we're incentivizing. Because I think that, given the run that we have here for TIFs, there's more potential here than just restraining these and thinking about credit enhancement agreements on TIFs only when it's a challenge to develop the parcel. So I think that we ought to be thinking about that in a way that we're identifying some, if we're providing a credit enhancement agreement, that, for lack of a better term, we're getting some return on that, and we identify what that is and in a measurable way.
And I appreciate that, because it was brought up as we developed the policies. And if you look under Section Two Eligibility for Assistance Under the Policy, the last bulleted point there is, "Public benefit from development must outweigh any possible adverse impacts on existing business or residence of the city." So we need to identify that in the application. Let me bring it to you.
Yeah, and just one last request. If, for the council, for the existing TIFs that we have now, could you provide a summary that shows the term, what the scope is, you know, what's allowable to be used for that, and the current, you know, so we can differentiate on the financial report, especially with these ones with negative balances, you know, what bond has been issued for which purpose? So I think so the council can get a better idea of the performance of the TIFs that we have today.
Absolutely. Finance, my department and the city manager's office have been working for the last, you know, number of months, trying to, you know, really hone this out so we can give you a lot better information, especially as we come into budget time. So we'll have that for you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the council? Thank you very much, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you.
Continuing on with communications, the next item is related to the Mayor's Ad Hoc Committee on the Public Safety Building. So you'll find in your packet, a charge and the committee members. For the public's benefit, the charge of the committee is to make recommendations to the Office of Facilities and Energy. That's our internal city entity that manages a project of this type. For the hiring of the design team and the construction manager, and to perform community outreach activities to ensure that residents' voices are heard and ensure they're informed of what's happening throughout this phase of the project. The three members will be Michael Heskinen, he's a retired architect, Tim Simpson, who's a retired pre-sales mechanical engineer, and Andy Titus, who's in the crowd, I see someplace here, who is a former city councillor. Are there any questions from the council on that item? If not, we'll move on. The next communications is related to the Mayor's Ad Hoc Committee on Housing. Again, there is a charge to this committee. They will provide recommendations to the city council as to the number and type of housing units needed in Auburn through 2030, and strategies to achieve those housing goals. There's a number of members that have been identified. Councillor Whitey will co-chair this committee with Ned Claxton, he's a former state senator. There's a number of members of the committee, Mary Beth Booth, Jane Barrett, Celia McGuckian, Chris Ugle, Catherine Manson, Fatuma Hussain, and Matt Duval. Unfortunately, because of some personal conflicts, our individual that was going to represent large landlords has not, has indicated he's not going to be able to continue on the committee. So we're still looking for someone to represent large landlord, and we are still looking for a private developer. Any questions or comments from the committee on this item? If not, we'll move on to the first open session of the evening. Members of the public are invited to speak to the city council on any issues directly related to city business or any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Joe Maylie, eighty-two Webster Street. I did pass in a written testimony to be read into the public record. Some that I found out recently in a discussion with Mr. Shear. Apparently, the notifications for the Chestnut Street closing through the planning committee, apparently they only get sent to the homeowners, the property owners, rather than renters. In my neighborhood, where I am, eighty-two Webster Street, there's at least five different houses that I can name off right off the top of my head, that each have roughly three tenants per building. A lot of these people have been long-term tenants, and they may not have been aware or made aware of this closure due to the fact that only the property taxpayer is receiving the notification. Problem is, is the renter is also a taxpayer. His part of the rent goes towards taxes. I just think, I would like to see the city of Auburn perhaps explore the possibilities of enhancing some of these mailings when it pertains to, I call it a quality of life change within a neighborhood. Will it draw more people out? I don't know. But I do know that there's a lot of renters out there that do not talk to their landlords on a regular basis. So unless they receive this in the mail themselves, they are not made aware, unless they pay attention to the city business day-to-day, which is something that happened to me, hence my written testimony. I don't know what the state laws are, or if the city of Auburn can do better than the state law, but I really would like to see the city perhaps at least discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maylie. As follow-up to your comments, I know that Councillor Whitey brought your concerns regarding the notifications to the city manager and I. There's a couple points that I would make. First, for folks that have items that they know are coming before the council, you can go to the city's webpage, click on the Alert Me button, and you can sign up and get notifications of both the council and the planning board. There's some other items there, but those are the two kind of operative committees, and you'll get an email with the link when the packet has been posted, so that you don't have to go and every day come into look, see if anything's shown up. So that's helpful for people. I know that the city manager has had some discussion about other ways to identify mailings that can go out to a limited area of residence. I think we need to be somewhat selective in that, because of some additional cost. I know, Mr. Manager, you may want to add to this. You also, I understand, will be following up to Mr. Maylie's written comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, in the written comments that Mr. Maylie had, there were a few questions regarding the specific project on Chestnut Street, the Powell Center. So I'll make those available, but then I also will put it part of the packet at our next meeting as far as communications.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council?
Good evening. Andy Titus, twenty-four Rubelite Lane. Welcome, council, by the way. What I'm going to bring up tonight is, I know it's a little early yet, but you know what my favorite subject is, budgets. And I understand that you had a retreat on Saturday, and I think one of the items was to kind of discuss the fiscal 2025. So I thought I'd just briefly give you my viewpoint this early in the game, and there's going to be a lot more to discuss as time goes on. But I see three things that you can look at quite simply, and I don't want to try to make something complicated simple. But to me, the most important thing is the tax levy itself. That, as you all know, is what we use, that number is what we collect from property taxpayers. Current, this fiscal 2024, it was twenty-five million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Keep that number in mind. This coming year, I'd certainly like to see an inflationary adjustment there, but we've got to be careful because we have a lot of things going on here, which relates to my second option, with a subject which is the fund balance. And I want to say that I was a little bit disturbed to see the eleventh-hour spending of nearly three million dollars of surplus fund balance at the tail end of last year, which is actually overcharging taxpayers, in my opinion, and it just was spent very quickly, and maybe for good purpose, but I really think that the budget process is where we can really vet every need in this city. And again, tonight there's another item that will again add to that, close to three million dollars. And I also heard, I thought I heard, that we may be looking at another surplus for fiscal 2024, but we won't know that until the audit's done in the fall, which means we're not going to do anything with it during budget season, and again, have this surplus to spend at the end of the year. And I'm a little nervous about that, and I'd like to see that go to the tax levy, I guess my bottom line, to see that we're going to have a tax levy with an inflationary increase, but then we're going to see a reduction that would be that fund, the surplus. That's probably there, but even though it's not audited, we can at least estimate what that's going to be. And then my third point is salaries. That's one of the biggest things that's going on right now. By other boards that I serve, it is a huge challenge to try and retain employees, which is causing a huge increase in salary increases. It's going to be a huge challenge. But this city, right now, looking at a salary report from last year, twenty to twenty-five employees, maybe more, are at six figures already. And if you look at that report, there's a lot more that, it just gets kind of scary to think about that, knowing that it's about eighty percent of your budget. So if you want to save money, I know it may be one of the only places that you can do that, or at least be careful and look at it. That's all I'm asking for. Because I can see with a new public safety building in the first half of the bonding, maybe this coming year or part of it, we're going to start finding things that, you know, the school was nothing compared to the public safety building when it comes to increasing our budget. So a lot to do, just wanted to give you some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to address the council? If not, we'll close the open session. We'll move on to unfinished business. The next two items, Ordinance 03-01162024 and 04-01162024, are interrelated. The council will recall from the last meeting, this is related to the division of the Regulatory Advisory Board back into the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Assessment Review Board. The zoning Board of Appeals piece is going to be lagging behind this, because it needs to go to the planning board for their review and recommendations. So the first item is Ordinance 03-01162024, amending Article Five, Division Two, Sections Two dash four thirty, four thirty-one, four thirty-three, four thirty-four, four thirty-five, and four forty-one of Auburn's Code of Ordinances, and striking all language referencing the Regulatory Advisory Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councillor Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Cowan. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any public comment. Is there a discussion by the council? There's no discussion. This is a second reading. The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Milks?
Yes.
Councillor Weisner?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Platts?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
Yes.
Councillor Whitey?
Yes.
Councillor Cowan?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The second piece of this is Ordinance 04-01162024, amending Article Five, Division Two, Sections Two dash four thirty, four thirty-one, four thirty-two, four thirty-three, four thirty-four, and four thirty-five of Auburn's Code of Ordinances and reinstating the Board of Assessment Review Ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councillor Whitey, seconded by Councillor Cowan. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Is there a discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? This is a second reading. The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Milks?
Yes.
Councillor Weisner?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Platts?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
Yes.
Councillor Whitey?
Yes.
Councillor Cowan?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance 06-01162024, amending Section Two dash four sixty-six of the Auburn Code of Ordinances, correcting the planning board compensation language. The council will recall from a prior meeting, this is a correction of language stating that the planning board would not be compensated, that was inadvertently retained several years ago when a stipend was authorized for the planning board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councillor Platts, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Cowan. Is there public comment on this item? Not seeing any discussion by the council. Councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More or less point of information, if we're correcting some language, when actually is this going to affect? Is it going to start immediately, or is it rectoactively?
So my understanding, and the clerk can correct me if I get this wrong, my understanding is that the actual change striking this from the ordinance will take effect five days after final action by the council. This will have no effect on the current compensation, because a change was made by a prior council, providing a stipend to the planning board that's being paid now. This is just conflicting language that was inadvertently retained.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on this item? This is a second reading. The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Milks?
Yes.
Councillor Weisner?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Platts?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
Yes.
Councillor Whitey?
Yes.
Councillor Cowan?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to new business. The next three items are interrelated. These are related to recommendations coming forth from the planning board based on a citizen petition for review of zoning. The first item is related to comprehensive plan change for future land use, and the next two items are related to this, are items related to the actual zoning of the parcels. The first item is Order 17-02052024, amending the future land use plan map in the comprehensive plan to designate city assessors' parcel IDs 174004, 174004001, and 174004002, land use as- as suburban development district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just so we're clear, Counselor Cowan, you're, you're moving for adoption?
Yes.
It's been moved by Counselor Cowan, seconded by Counselor Walker. There is a public hearing on this item. If any members of the public would like to testify related to this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no member of the public wishing to testify, we'll close public hearing. Is there a discussion by the council? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is there was some discussion about the 2010 comprehensive plan sort of messing this up, and I'd just like to point out that that was 14 years ago, and we haven't had a second full comprehensive plan. And so if there was any mistake, it's been made in the interim, because I don't think a 14-year-old comp plan is worth relying on for much of anything.
Is there other comments or questions from the council? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I cannot support this. We're changing a zone where only one person wants to change, and the abutters don't want to. So, until we have a chance to sit down and really flesh things out, like redo the comprehensive plan, I'm not supporting this.
Other questions or comments by the council? So I have a few comments on this. As a general statement, I think that the expectation from the planning board is consistency and equity as one item. I see this comp plan change as very problematic because this is a completely opposite approach than what the planning board took last year when the issues of rezoning some parcels on Andrews Drive came before them. It's, it's very difficult for citizens or developers to understand the process that's going to be used if the planning board takes different approaches each time one of these items comes before them. The other comment I would make is that this process is adverse to actual comprehensive planning. While, as Counsel Whiting pointed out, this was first taken up in 2010, this was taken up again in 2022, and the planning board and the council on both occasions voted to continue the land use in this area as agriculture. While there are some arguments that might be made in, in an upcoming comprehensive plan review that that might be changed, I think doing comprehensive planning on a parcel-by-parcel basis, whether it's here, whether it's what we dealt with recently on Penley Corner Road, what happened last year on Andrews Drive, I don't think that is the best approach for this. I would urge the council to vote no. Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? One having voted in the affirmative and six in the negative, the motion fails. The next item is ordinance 0702052024, amending the zoning map of the City of Auburn entitled City of Auburn Zoning Map dated May 16, 2016, revised through its current date and revisions, as provided under Section 60-5 of the zoning ordinance by amending approximately 11 acres of parcel ID 174-004-001 located on Riverside Drive from the Agricultural and Resource Protection Zoning District to the Low Density Rural Residential Zoning District. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Counsel Walker has moved that it's adopted as printed. Is there a second?
I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
It's been seconded by Counselor Whiting. Is there a public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there a discussion by the council? Counsel Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would just like to say that over the years, there's been a lot of people that have owned a lot of different parcels of land, and it seems like every time one person comes up that wants to either build a small house or make it so that he could build one or two pieces of property out on his land that he might own, there's always something that's in the zoning that stops a man from having the right to build himself a new home 300 feet off from the road or 600 feet off from the road and have any split land parcels because we've either allowed it to happen in the past, which is really ridiculous when a person owns a piece of land for all the years that this gentleman and his family have owned this land, not to give him the right to be able to build on it or to sell it off so someone else could build themselves a home.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I think this all, it does, it's pertinent to an overall discussion that we need to have as a city about the agricultural resource protection zoning as a whole.
Any other questions or comment by the council?
Just a clarification and the planning board, planning board tabled petition.
The, the planning board recommendation was that this not be rezoned. The, the other thing that I would point out is for, for the council, for clarification, since the prior item failed and the comp plan isn't being changed, passage of this would create an inconsistent, we see with the comp plan, and we would be a foul of Title 30A under the state statute that prohibits zoning that's inconsistent with a comprehensive plan.
I would move to indefinitely postpone in light of the comp plan issues.
I'll second it.
Counselor Whiting has moved to indefinitely postpone, has been seconded by Counselor Gary. Is there a discussion on this point by the council? Just for clarity for the public, so the, the motion to indefinitely postpone, if it's carried forward by the council and adopted, would, would in effect kill this. Since this is an ordinance change, in effect, if the sentiment of the council is not to adopt this and follow the planning board recommendation, it would save the, the preparation of all this again by the clerk and this coming forward again in the next meeting. Any further discussion? Counsel ready for the question? The motion before us is to indefinitely postpone. This vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? One having voted in affirmative and six in the negative, the motion to indefinitely postpone is adopted. The next item is ordinance 0802052024, amending the zoning map of the City of Auburn.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You're, me.
Excuse me?
The vote was 5-2, not 6-1.
Yeah, excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry. Yep, did you, the clerk got that? Yep, thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification. So back to this next item, amending the zoning map of the City of Auburn entitled City of Auburn Zoning Map dated 5/16/2016, revised through its current date and revisions, as provided under Section 60-5 of the zoning ordinance by amending city assessors parcel IDs 174-004, 174-004-001, and 174004-002 located on Riverside Drive from the Agricultural and Resource Protection Zoning District to the Low Density Rural Residential or Rural Residential Zoning District. Is there a motion?
I'll move for purposes of discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
It's been moved by, it's been moved by Counselor Whiting and seconded by Counselor Gary. Is there a public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there a discussion by the council? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. As with the prior motion, I would move to indefinitely suspend.
Is there a?
Indefinitely postpone.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Counsel Whiting has moved to indefinitely postpone, seconded by Counselor Gary. Is there a discussion by the council?
I got a point of information. On the indefinitely postponed, when we review this, when we do a comp plan review, this doesn't prevent somebody in the future from bringing up this issue in a, in a, under comp plan review and future ordinance, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
It's just this particular item, I want to make sure everybody's clear on that, that, that this doesn't mean that no one's ever going to be able to change anything on these parcels. It's just meaning that we're not bringing this particular ordinance change up again.
Yep, that, that is correct, and it's a, it's a good point. The indefinite post, postponement is only for this item. It would not prevent in the comp plan review, review of these parcels and potentially their use being changed in a future comp plan.
If this person wanted to bring this change up again, they were, they could do that as well, correct?
Yep, that is, that's correct.
In a new motion.
They could bring, they, right. The, a 25 per-
It's only pertinent to this one.
A 25-person petition could be forwarded again to the planning board for their consideration. This is limited just to this particular action in front of us tonight.
Okay, thanks. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Counsel Walker.
Can you tell me, is there a fee when someone wants to get a petition to, to move on something like this?
I don't know for certain. Can you answer that, Mr. Manager?
Eric can answer that. I believe there is a fee.
Yeah, Mr. Cousins?
There is a fee for processing a request like that, and there's a fee for paying for the advertising that's required. So I believe the fee is $400, and then 300 gets passed through to Sun Journal for the advertising.
So that, to make sure I'm clear on this, the total fee is what for, for this item?
$700.
$700?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Does that answer your question, Counsel Walker?
Yes, it does. If you don't mind, I'd just like to ask another question, because I'm not sure how this all works when you, when you go out to try to get something done like this. So you're saying that 300 of the 700 would go to the newspaper?
That, that's correct.
And if the, if he, so your fee is 400 actually to do the process of him asking for rezoning for his property?
Yes, plus the advertising costs of three, 300.
And, and if you don't mind me saying, I'll move into the planning board for instance, is it more because of what has to go through the planning board, or is it more because it has to be brought to this level here?
I think the, the fee is to cover staff costs and council time, I guess, but mostly staff costs and prepping and application for planning board and then city council. The advertising fees are based on the number of meetings that we have to advertise.
Okay, I guess one more question. There was three plots here. This gentleman only came forward with just one, the one he lives on, correct?
Correct, and he was only charged once for that petition. The other two were initiated by the planning board.
Yeah, and, and if you don't mind me saying, him talking with me said that he felt that by bringing up the three in that, in that area, the three parcels, that it was like throwing gas on top of a match. And he felt that he got robbed from, because if you had told him or someone that's higher up than you that he had no chance to get in this pass, and you were, I guess, breaking whatever rules that may be here because of whatever was passed 20 years ago, he would have never wasted his money doing this, and I don't think I would have been stupid enough to waste my money if I would have been told, "Do not waste your money because this will never pass because of the zoning that's here in place," and the other two people are 100% against you even having a chance to move forward.
So, so-
So I think this man should be giving his money back and willing to apologize that you shouldn't have put on the other two parcels without him knowing that that was going to be done to hurt his chances of even moving forward. Thank you.
So, so as a, a point of clarification, I, I understand the, the concerns and the sentiment that Counsel Walker has put forth, but this really is not within the control of the staff, right? If I understand this correctly, Mr. Cousins, the petition came in, the petition to rezone one single parcel was what was put forth to the planning board, and through the planning board process, they determined in their deliberations to recommend this change to the comp plan and took up the issue of rezoning all three parcels and not just the one as an alternative.
Correct, so the map was more uniform and they took a, a bigger picture view.
Counsel Milks?
I'd like to make a motion to the, motion to indefinitely suspend to refund the gentleman's money.
I'll second it.
So, so you can't amend a motion to indefinitely postpone, so my recommendation to the council would be, so, so you're kind of got yourself in a corner here. So let me explain what your options are. You could go forward to the indefinite, the indefinite postponement. You two counselors could make a request of the manager to put an item on a upcoming agenda to deal with the issue of potential refund. If you, you could deal with that tonight by the council voting against the adoption of the indefinite postponement, you could not bring indefinite postponement up again, meaning we could deal with this issue. It's pretty far afield from the item, the question that's in front of you. My recommendation would be that the concerned counselors ask the manager about placing an item on the agenda for the next meeting to take up that item. Do you agree, Mr. Manager?
Yeah.
Counsel Whiting?
Yes, I'd just like to talk about the, the planning process and the staff and, and how people, when they are seeking to do a rezoning via petition, they have the right to contact staff and consult with them, and had, I'm presuming that they didn't do that because I think if they had, Eric or John or somebody would have said to the person that this is going to constitute spot zoning, and so it's unlikely to be approved by the planning board unless you get a block of, of properties to make it not spot zoning, which they did, but then that was not workable. So it's a complicated topic, I know, but there's some responsibility on the part of the applicant when they're giving money to the city to find out what they're investing that money in.
Counsel Walker?
Yes, so you know, Mr. Whiting, he had talked with John Blaze quite extensively on this whole thing, and John Blaze told him he had a good chance of getting this passed. So, again, John's not here to defend that, but I know he talked with John about this more than once. So, what the real thing was determined between them, I don't really know.
Point of information, Mr. Manager? Is there a, is there a policy? Is there something internally with the staff that we could do to address the gentleman in, in the refund so we don't have to do it at the, it seems like a $400 thing would, at the council level?
Yeah, I'd, I'd recommend not taking any action this evening on this. I know there's, I heard some discussions regarding maybe suspending rules, but I think the best thing to do would be bring this back before the next meeting. Those two counselors who request this to be on, on the future agenda, probably give some very clear- Those two counselors who request this to be on, on the future agenda, probably give some very clear description of what you're hoping to accomplish. It should not include the advertisement, uh, but only the application. The advertisement cost should not be, uh, on the taxpayers, um, for that request. Um, and so that, there's, there's some things that we could make sure that we put within that language. I think Eric could probably, you know, speak to what Council Walker was just referring to regarding, uh, his staff. Thank you. I would just add that we had a very open conversation with this property owner, as we do with anybody that's considering a change like this. Um, as is often the case, if somebody's looking to change a single parcel, but we think it's more logical or more in compliance with the plan to do a larger area, um, we'll explain to them the risk. The risk of his neighbors being upset was certainly discussed, and, um, our suggestion was to get this into the discussion, that he not take angering the neighbors on himself, but we as a city look at the big picture if that's where the planning board wants to go. So he wasn't the one personally proposing the changes on other properties. Um, different options, but they were all weighed with the person that petitioned.
Council Mills?
And I just want to make sure I'm, I'm very clear that I, I'm not implying in any way that the staff did anything wrong on that. And my, my feeling for the refund on that is to, if we're going to not take up and make a decision on, then I feel that, then that, that person that brought the petition forward should get that refunded, that piece, because we're choosing not to make a decision on it.
Council ready for the question? On the motion to indefinitely postpone, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six, uh, one having voted in the affirmative and six in the negative, the, uh, motion is adopted. The next order of business is item four, Order 1802052024, setting the date for a public hearing for a dangerous building located at 46 Fair Street.
Moved as presented. Second.
It's moved by Council Whiting, seconded by Council Walker to, to adopt the March 18th date for a hearing. Is there any public comment on this item? Discussion by the council?
I had one question, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was curious if this property owner had been in any trouble with the planning board previously? Not necessarily pursuant to dangerous buildings, but failing of inspections, et cetera?
Mr. Manager?
We, I don't have any information to share this evening regarding that.
Any other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is item number five, Order 1902052024, ratifying the fire department's contract agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Weisner and seconded by Council Mills to adopt as printed. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none is a discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is item six, Order 2002052024, authorizing the use of $89,306.42 from the fund balance to support the 2024 Lewiston-Auburn Warming Center to be located in the city of Lewiston. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Whiting. Is there a public comment on this item? If so, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, Andy Titus, 24 Ruble Lake Lane. Just had a couple of questions. Um, this kind of thing is something we've been trying to work towards. But when I was looking at the packet, I had a few questions. One of them was, how was it determined the, the breakoff between Lewiston and Auburn and what they were paying? And how was that arrived at? And number two, it's, it's a little confusing because it talks about, uh, warming center, which I implied it to be for the homeless, a warming center, but then it says it's been done by the Immigrant Resource Center, which I thought they were two separate, different, uh, goals. So I didn't know if we had some, what was going on particularly, and I hope you had a chance to really look at the, the breakdown of expenses and how that happened. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, um, respond to the question that's been raised by the member of the public, the second question. The Immigrant Resource Center is the entity that's going to manage the operation and, um, uh, they provide many different services. This is a proposal for a warming center slash temporary overnight shelter for homeless, uh, just managed by the Immigrant Resource Center. And Mr. Manager, do you have any comment on the first item about the apportionment?
So I, we do have Fatima Hussein, who's in the audience, that can probably speak to some of this. I think that they broke down, uh, some of the costs based off from, um, city, uh, contribution between Lewiston and Auburn, but I'll have Fatima, um, when you're ready, Mayor. Uh, she can speak to this further.
Yeah, and I, and further on that, I think, uh, I think Mr. Titus' question was more about the apportionment between Lewiston and Auburn. I think this was negotiated between the two cities, and, um, I think there's some recognition in the split that, um, the city of Lewiston is likely to incur additional costs beyond just what's shown here in the budget for the program, as this would be located in Lewiston, and they would have to provide certain services, police response, fire response, uh, medical response. So there is likely to be additional costs outside the program budget absorbed by the city of Lewiston. And, uh, Miss Hussein, would you care to come to the podium and, and, uh, speak to the program?
Good evening. Um, Fatima Hussein, I live in, um, in Auburn, 34 Havestown Lane. The numbers are based on the expenses that were incurred at the last year's warming center. Auburn, like you said, the mayor, Auburn is actually getting a lesser price because, um, when it comes to public services such as police, fire, the building and other costs, it's, it's going to be a little, a little bit more in Lewiston. The services are going to be a bit different this year, and Bill is here, he can talk to about Calvary too. We are looking at providing homeless services, uh, for Auburn. I'm in Auburn, so I'll talk about Auburn, um, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday. And we will do 24 hours, Saturday and Sunday, for about eight weeks. We are also looking at wraparound services such as recovery services, mental health services. Here in Auburn, we do provide comprehensive housing services where we have navigators at General Assistance Office. And so the plan is to really assess who's coming in, looking at encampments, um, not running into the emergency mode that we ran into last year. Uh, we're very much equipped. Um, we do have what's called stability services, looking at when someone comes in and really assessing what their needs are in terms of what point of services they need. We are also in what's called the, um, coordinated entry point where we use, um, data to assess where the levels are of who needs what in terms of services. We are in winter in the state of Maine. We have people who are out cold. The idea was to either come to local municipalities like, such as Auburn and Lewiston versus the state of Maine. Lewiston-Auburn did submit an application to the state of Maine. It was extremely very expensive, almost eight times the amount that we are requesting for, and so that was denied. That said, um, we are funded through the state of Maine, uh, Maine Housing, particularly to fund the navigators and all of that. So the reason why we're coming to you is, if we go to Maine Housing, then we're competing with the services that are City of Auburn General Assistance Office. And so we had to come here and ask for support and, um, and hopefully this is the data that we can actually use for what's to come moving forward. We do really collect a lot of data. I didn't include this in the packet, but I have a little thing here I can give it to you. And this is the number of people that we worked with in Auburn in 2023, how many people we actually served and who we housed in the city of Auburn. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I was gonna-
Council Mills?
It's, it's anybody that's in need, correct?
Oh, absolutely. We are comprehensive.
But anybody can go in. Where's the building and like whereabouts is it from?
Calvary, uh, but it's, um, church on 159 Sabata Street. Bill Reed is here from Calvary too. He did, uh, Bill and I go way back and, you know, when, when the opportunity did come up, I reached out to Bill. Bill convened, uh, the leadership of Calvary, and the leadership of Calvary did, um, agree for us to use the facility. The facility has two levels, and it could, um, have up to 80 people a night, even maybe a little bit more. And the idea is to have three staff members and one security person that actually, you know, have to have two upstairs and two downstairs. We provide food, um, there is case management on site. Uh, people come in and we, we collect, you know, where you came from, um, how long have you been homeless, what are your immediate needs, do you have case management? That data points that really help us try to help, um, the folks. What I can assure you is, when we had a warming center, we were, at times, we had over 100 people. People would come in. Um, and the reason why we're having a little bit of extended hours where we opened at midnight, but now we can open at 6:00 PM, it's sort of connecting people to services so that at 8:00 AM, when 8:00 AM occurs and we give them breakfast, we're able to route them to Trinity Jubilee or the drop-in center. Um, you know, the homeless services are really a huge service, so there's a lot of coordination that happens, but we lack resources. That's why we're coming to you tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, Council Count?
Just a comment. I, I just really want to, um, thank Fatima and, uh, the Immigrant Resource Center of Maine for your leadership, uh, your compassion, uh, in, in, in bringing this forward. Um, I love how this is a coordinated approach. I really greatly appreciate all that you are doing. Thank you to the, to the church and, uh, the membership and leaders there for, for opening your doors. It's, it's, you know, we've, we've said for a while, as we've talked about the homeless issue, that it's, it's a community issue. It's a community across, it's the Lewiston-Auburn community. It's not one side or the other of the river, and I, I just think this is a great, uh, example of that. So thank you, heartfelt thank you.
Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to echo the good counselor's sentiment. This is such an important topic that we can't put a price on a person's life, and I'm glad we're doing something. Now, would you be working with Dan Campbell as well as a bunch of other church groups that have been out there in the trenches?
Absolutely. Um, so when we went to Calvary and, you know, again, knowing the history, we didn't know that there was any other entity that was out there, um, that was going to do a warming center. We as Immigrant Resource Center are known to volunteer, to do a lot of work. Last winter, we did 24 hours here in Auburn at Family Development. That was, it went really well, and so we have that track record. And so we came to realize that this other group is interested in this work mid-last week, late-last week. And at that point, it was like we were trying to pull together. So we came here, coming from a finance meeting of the city of Lewiston, and I told Dan, "I think it's important for all of us to work together." I am a big believer in collaboration and partnership. That's what we're known here for, Auburn. We work together. We work together in Lewiston, and I think if granted, and I'm hoping you grant this, then my job is to reach out to them and say, "What can we do?"
My other comment was, when I first asked the good city manager, he first wasn't sure of the numbers. And when I was talking with their mayor, uh, the good manager sent me a text message that he believed there would be 100 people that would be helped every night, and if it was really cold and there was no place to go, that you could probably do at least 120 people.
Absolutely. It's a low-bearing, um, warming center. That means we don't shut down the doors on anyone. Um, like I said, last winter, um, when it was cold, we had 110, we had 120, and we didn't complain. Um, I remember when, one of these blizzard days, I, um, brought food because we couldn't order food, and so we had to cook. So I, oh, I got food from outside, and as I was driving, there was a man who was buried in the snow. Nobody knew that he was buried in the snow. So I, then I panicked a little bit. We called 911. I called for help. We, you know, we resuscitated him, we revived him. That's who we are. We work with people whose quality of life has been affected for many, many, many years. And what we're trying to do is trying to turn that around, and it takes a village to do that. And so absolutely, um, we are going to get people, you know, people blamed us. When people show up at 1:00 o'clock in the morning, you don't shut down the door on them. No, we're not going to shut down the door on them. But this year, we're going to put some, some, some rules. I'm going to put my foot down and tell them, "You've got to follow my rules, otherwise you're out."
Council Weisner?
Thank you kindly.
Thank you so much for all the great work that you're doing and everything to come in the future. It's, it's great to see. Um, I just have one question, um, just looking at your budget, um, because I see that the personnel, um, Auburn and Lewiston are splitting the cost there, but under the fringe benefits, um, Lewiston-Auburn, that's under employee FICA and Medicaid, Auburn's taking a higher cost in that split. I, I don't know if you're able to answer that or Mr. Mayor, C-Manager can answer that?
Yeah, I, I spoke with the city minister here in Lewiston today, and we will work that number out with, with Fatima as we, we iron the rest of those budget numbers out. Thank you so much.
Council Plaid?
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Fatima, for being here. Again, to echo everyone's sentiments, uh, thank you for the work that you're doing. I think it's important for Lewiston-Auburn to have, have this. I, I, as Council Gary said, I, you know, you, this, we have a moral obligation to, to folks to provide these services, um, even if they're not taxpaying citizens. Um, you know, these are life and death issues, and as, as Council Gary said, you can't put a price on that. Um, one thing I will say though is that you, you can put an economic cost on it, and Fatima, you brought up, you know, being data-driven and looking at the numbers, and I would just say, you know, this problem that we're dealing with in the Twin Cities is only going to get bigger. Uh, and so for whatever we can do as we see iterations of services like this, to pay attention to the numbers, pay attention to the data, um, we're going to have larger obligations in the future to deal with things like this. We're going to be approached with proposals like this with much larger numbers in the future. And I think for whatever we can do to just be smart and efficient, um, that's the best chance we'll have at dealing with a growing issue. So, thank you.
And we can, um, we can also bring data back and really present to you all at the end of the two months.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item is open session. If any members of the public would like to address the council, uh, you're invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business or any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Greg Whitney. I'm the president of the drop-in center that, uh, Fatima referred to. Um, I didn't realize you were going to cut off public comment on the, on the project so, so quickly. I just wanted to thank the, the council for supporting Fatima's project. Um, we all know how, how much needed that is. And I was just going to give a, a couple of examples of what we've seen at the drop-in center when, uh, when folks show up at 7:30, 8:00, 9:00 in the morning. One of the big things we see is people are very, very tired, and it's because when you're homeless, it's difficult to sleep at night. A lot of these folks are walking all night just to stay warm. They come into the center and they'll put their head down on the table and sleep for three or four hours. And we see a lot of frostbite this time of year as well, so I really appreciate the support that the council has given this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the open session and move on to reports. For the mayor's report, um, a, a couple items here. um, a couple items here. Um, Mr. Labonte mentioned earlier in the workshop, uh, he and I had a chance to, um, uh, visit with the Auburn-Lewiston Civil Air Patrol Squadron that uses the airport. Of particular note, uh, one of our residents, Sean Hagerty, who lives on, um, Howe Street, was promoted to cadet lieutenant colonel, and he received the General Ecker Award, for which less than 1% of the Civil Air Patrol cadets in the country receive. Um, it was a significant honor, and, uh, congratulations to, um, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Hagerty on that achievement. Um, uh, several of us, myself, Counsel Gary, Counsel Cowan, uh, attended a coalition of organizations and citizens concerned with homelessness at the Connect Church last weekend. It was hosted by the Salt and Light Community Center. There was more than 80 attendees. Uh, it was very encouraging to see so many members of the public willing to come out and engage on the topic, uh, supporting programs for homelessness, and many people volunteering their time and efforts to help with the situation. For, um, counsel reports, we'll start on this far side with Counsel Platts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, brief, brief summary here. Uh, this week, um, a lot lined up on the school committee. We have the school committee meeting on Wednesday. There's also a facilities meeting, um, on Wednesday as well that I'll be attending, and a finance committee meeting next week. One update from the finance committee at the last school committee meeting, um, a new business manager was named, um, Amanda Koacher, um, who's been working as an assistant business manager, was offered the business manager position for Auburn School System. Uh, that is as a result of the current business manager retiring. So, um, that's my only update from the last meeting.
Counsel Walker?
Thank you. I attended a meeting at Waste Day Energy, which is MWAAC, uh, right here, our local place where we take our trash to be burned and to, uh, again, run the facility, hopefully with some of the money that is made from burning our trash and selling electricity power off. Uh, everything seems to be going pretty normal. Of course, as everyone else, we're having a hard time to keep the employees there happy and, and keeping everybody in place. But that's a struggle that everyone's having, so we're no different than the rest. Uh, they'll, I think as we get closer, working with the budget, uh, we'll be able to give you some reports on, uh, where we're going and what the increase may be. I believe it will be 2%. I think that's how we kind of work the increase for the city of Auburn and the other towns. So that's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Counsel Weisner?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to the Public Works Department for all the hard work they're doing with the storms that have been coming up and, and the long hours they've been working. It's great to see them out and, and helping us out during those times.
Thank you. Counsel Milk?
Nothing.
Counsel Cowan?
Uh, yeah, uh, just wanted to note that the SRNB, uh, committee is met earlier today for the first discussion of moving forward with a solid waste and recycling, uh, plan for the, the city to be, to be brought back to the city council, um, in the fall or earlier. So that's good. I'll keep you posted on those proceedings. And then just that the LITC is meeting this Thursday, so we should be reviewing a budget, and we'll have more to share next meeting.
Thank you. Counsel Whiting?
Thank you. I'd like to recognize a fellow named Mac McPeak. Uh, his, he was in the 25 Years Ago Today column. Uh, he, I think he was the original reader for Book Reach, which is a joint program between the Lewiston Public Library and the Auburn Public Library. And I think I was like the second or third reader, maybe the fourth reader. I'm still reading. Mac has recently retired, but I just want to recognize, you know, think about that, 25 years of reading to kids in daycares, and he did multiple, not just one. I typically have done one. Now I do two by Zoom, but, uh, he was a trooper, and thank him for his efforts.
Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sort of isn't really a counselor's report, other than I would like to throw out there to see if I can get another counselor or counselor's support. It's been brought to my, well, as you know, that I'm a big proponent for food insecurity, insecurity gardens and things. And the PAL Center's been running the grab-and-go grocery program for seniors and families. And we were told today that they're not going to be able to accept any more specifically seniors that would like to participate in the grab-and-go program, because, because I'm not sure of funding or what it is, but I would like this brought back at a future council meeting so that we can find out the facts on the budget for the, this, the PAL Center and what they do have for the grab-and-go grocery program. And if they do need more money, I would like to see if we could allocate some more money towards it. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Uh, Counsel Gary, I will look into that. I know that the council did allocate more funds to continue for this fiscal year, so I'll find out. I'm not familiar with that announcement, but I will, I will look into the matter. Uh, I do have just two items to share. First, as many of you know, Anderson County was included in the, uh, National Disaster, um, Declaration that was done. Um, so we received information from FEMA regarding individual assistance as well as business assistance and filing for FEMA claims. There is a deadline, which is Monday, April 1st. What I will be asking FEMA is to come to our next city council meeting and set up in the, outside the doors here, and individuals who, um, may want to meet with them, speak with them, could do that. They're also located at the, uh, the, there is a disaster recovery center located at the Lewiston Armory that will be opening soon. They'll be posting their hours. We'll make sure we push that information out, so others will, will know that and know that it'll be available anytime there. But I thought during a public meeting, it would be good to make sure that that's available as well. Uh, the second item is regarding, uh, a celebration that, uh, will be hosted at the Donald Gay Performing Arts Center at Edward Little High School. Uh, this will be free admission. Uh, it's called Common Threads 2024. Uh, Common Threads is an opportunity to celebrate diverse fashion, culture, food, music, uh, from around the corner and around the world. Uh, so we are looking forward to, to having that. Again, April 30th at 6:00 PM. Uh, we'll have more information will be coming out. There's a, uh, through the city's website, you can go to the Common Threads website. Uh, they are looking for, um, clothing donations, uh, models to display some of the, um, attire that will be as part of a fashion show. So, uh, there'll also be desserts that'll be available. So the team is doing a great job working with, collaborating with other business, uh, other, uh, organizations to host that. So we are looking forward to that. You'll get more information soon.
Any other new business from the counsel? For clarification for the public, the executive session that's on the agenda was held, uh, earlier this evening. Uh, there will be no further executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Weisner, seconded by Counsel Milk to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned.